I'm not gonna be a part of this. It's just... What I'm saying...
And leave your phone because I just saw the screen. You're recording and you're removing a public recording from a public building, which is illegal. Otter Creek Town Hall, and the planet wants to know. Will Russ the Suss show up even though he's no longer on the council? Will his granddaughter and her boyfriend show up if he's not there? Why is it that these individuals don't show up for the community if they're not getting $100? And who the hell knows what Don the Con is gonna pull tonight?
What a beautiful day in the neighborhood.
So we do know Don the Con is showing up. He's blessed us with his presence right here.
Hi, Don.
We did see Russ the Suss's granddaughter and her boyfriend going away from Town Hall earlier.
Unless they're picking him up.
So it's anybody's guess what Don the Con is gonna do tonight. Whatever it is, I'm sure we'll all be laughing about it.
Well, I don't know if the door's unlocked yet.
Oh, we're unlocked. Let's do this.
It is. Okay.
At least you came early to look at your paperwork this time. I believe Don just turned on his cellphone for a personal recording, which if he's recording, he can't legally remove it from the building.
It's time to ask Don for my $50. Remember when he bet me money in a council meeting? Eh, a little unethical, but I'm here to collect.
I'll bet you $50 it'll pass any test you put it through.
You got my 50 bucks yet, Don? You won that bet? So if I pour you a glass right now, you'll drink it? If I go to the bathroom and pour you a glass, you'll drink the whole glass right now? Selective hearing. Vice Mayor Zim is here. Megan, her town legal representation at council, is here. That's Laura Mott right there, who's set to be seated today.
Interestingly enough, Russ the Suss doesn't show. And it's time for some debunking because Marla Huge had a few things to say that he had something going on, and we're gonna see... Let's just see what Marla had to say. Yet again, this genius just shows us how foolish she is. Russ the Suss doesn't show. Albert Fuller doesn't show. The whole gang of corruption doesn't show. As a matter of fact, Don's about to go his own way out. You're not gonna believe what he does.
Carl, Laura, Joseph, if y'all would please come up here. We can all get y'all sworn in. You guys getting sworn in as...
We intentionally... We don't have a quorum without swearing in these members, so we should get it first.
Megan, our town lawyer, who Russ the Suss and Don the Con wanted above every other lawyer, is now gonna be called criminal by Don the Con. Megan just told him, "We do not have a quorum. We must seat the new members first." Don being one of them. So it is Zim, Don, Laura, Carl, Joseph, okay? Right now, only Zim exists as a current board member because Russ the Suss screwed so much of this stuff up throughout the years. And so there's nothing that can be accomplished with just one out of five. She's telling him the law, the legality. This is the woman he wanted above all others. And I love her.
What you're attempting to do here is immoral, it's illegal, and it's criminal. You know it. Completely ignore the charter. And I'm not gonna be a part of this. It's just... What I'm saying...
And leave your phone because I just saw the screen. You're recording and you're removing a public recording from a public building, which is illegal. Did a grown man just use playground tactics? It's for me to know and you to find out. I'm rubber, you're glue, whatever you say bounces off of me and sticks on you. The craziness of this.
Maybe he learned it from Sharp. Boo hoo, goo goo, shoo shoo.
Okay, so first and foremost, I watched Don already take his phone, turn the recording on, set his phone upside down. Now, in the shot, when he picks it up with my eyes, even though the camera can't see it as well, I see the whole recording screen. I do this enough to know it. I know that screen. And as a matter of fact, I'm gonna still shot it and show it to you as well. Now, some would say, "Okay, well, Don the Con, why can't he take a recording out of the building?" Because Don the Con is public official. Therefore, it is a public document. It's a public recording, and it stays in the building to be disseminated to the public. He can't take it out. Now, he's been doing this for months. So I know there are some that are gonna say, "Well, Don the Con has to be sworn in on the new seat." Correct. Don the Con also was already a public member, and therefore, it just transfers right over. Therefore, his recording is still public information. But then there are those that are gonna say, "The meeting didn't start yet." The meeting did start. Vice Mayor Zim said, "Come on over here so we can swear you in." That's on the agenda. That's beginning of the meeting. Therefore, meeting officially started. Therefore, those individuals who ran for those seats, now who are recording, and Don giving it to Sharp for her to further incriminate these fools. The insanity of this all. And then him to call Megan criminal? I mean, Don the Con, obviously, obviously, has the thing for me because he's starting to sound like me. That's corrupt! That's corrupt!
So that's where we stand, okay? Well, listen, you can't control the meeting. Look at this. Happens every time. We haven't had one for five months. It's all on you. So it's criminal what you're doing here. And I bid you goodnight.
Are you quitting?
Leave your chat here.
Yeah. Are you quitting, Don?
Seems to me there was a meeting in the last five months, and Don the Con and Russ the Suss intentionally sabotaged that meeting, walking out.
No!
If you three will... But he won't get sworn in. If you guys three would come up here, please. Closer to me. You're gonna raise your right hand for me, please. You're gonna repeat after me. I'm stating your name.
Hi, Carl Huge.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemn swear.
...or affirm that I will...
Or affirm that I will.
...uphold and defend the Constitution...
Uphold and defend the Constitution.
...of the United States and the Constitution...
And the United States and the Constitution.
...and the laws of the State of Florida...
And the laws of the State of Florida.
...and the ordinance of the town of Otter Creek.
And the ordinance of the town of Otter Creek.
So help me God.
So we got it.
Welcome aboard.
Some may not be familiar with the new council members. First, you've got Carl. Carl's a longtime resident of Otter Creek.
Eighteen, nineteen years?
He's a family man, and he cares about families. He cares about positive and appropriate growth for the town. He wants a better home for his family and for other families as well. Then you got Laura Mott. And she's gotten messed up with Russ the Suss, Don the Cons, and she's made quite a few mistakes. Illegal mistakes when it comes to water resolutions. And I wanna give her every benefit of the doubt, but I don't trust her at all. As a matter of fact, on the outside, I think she's playing the game trying to look like she wants these things. On the inside, I think she's up to the old same things of the past. But she'll have that opportunity to prove me wrong. She's got two years to prove me wrong. And cameras will be on her every step of the way. Her Form 6, all information. It wasn't all that long ago she's yelling at me in the road saying, "How did he give you permission to film me?" And yet, she's telling the Chief Lynn Citizen that she wants anybody to communicate with her. Send smoke signals, even if they're just lonely. She'll answer and talk to them. And yet, she won't talk to a camera? What's there to hide? Now, you've got Joseph as well. I don't know Joseph personally. Still to this day, I don't know every member or resident in Otter Creek. But I'm hoping this is a positive turn and change for everybody here.
This call says to order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the... We need to approve the minutes from the last two meetings. February meeting and the meeting that was...
In your... Hold the amount to the... Before you get the minutes, you're on approval of this month's agenda.
Oh, sorry.
No worries.
I did the wrong.
It's been a while since they had a meeting. So they're gonna be a little off, but don't worry. I think this team is gonna hit the ground running soon enough.
The approval for the agenda. Does everybody have a chance to look at the agenda? Everyone approve?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Yeah, call for a motion.
Do we need a motion?
I make a motion.
Second, okay. I am... So there's two motions and we gotta vote?
All in favor.
Anyone? A vote for the agenda?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Ms. Laura, remember, this is very important. It's you to have this thing, okay?
All right, and do we... We got... Do we want to do a roll call thing before we get to this, or we don't?
It is. It's up top. The third one, after pledge.
Okay. We need to stay for a second. We have to select a mayor for the next year's term. Does anybody have a...
I have a motion. I'm the mayor.
Do we need a second?
Yeah.
I tell them to have their motion or assist to vote, right?
Well, it's good. Motion second.
Motion second.
I'll agree.
Okay. I agree, so it's unanimous. We need a vice mayor. Carl? Carl, you okay with that?
Yep, I'm good with that.
So you have a motion for Carl?
A motion for Carl. Well, I have a motion for Carl.
Okay.
A second. That's unanimous.
All in favor. Allow them to vote so that it can be recorded.
And favor.
Have the speaker...
We officially have a mayor in Otter Creek and a vice mayor. It's Mayor Zim, Vice Mayor Carl, and I'm thrilled.
New business. There's approval of the minutes. There we go. We got it now. Just get the two... We got two sets of the minutes. We gotta vote for, approve, or approve February minutes. Do we wanna do two separate motions?
It doesn't matter unless there's any dispute.
If anybody does dispute, it's just thrown together. Both meetings. We give a motion to accept the minutes.
I make a motion.
Second.
Second. So it's unanimous. New business. Selecting a signer for the Capital City accounts for Suncoast accounts. We'll have to have... We'll use the minutes for...
No, actually, whenever we decide, each of you guys will sign the back of my form so we can take it to the bank.
Everyone wants to know, did Don get paid? Did anybody get paid at that meeting? Now, you see what's happening right now with the new council coming in. They have to designate those who can actually sign the checks. Therefore, to my understanding, no checks were cut because they didn't have signers yet. It has to officially be in the minutes. All of the council members have to sign the minutes. Then it goes to the bank. Then they approve the next year's signers for checks. Then checks will be cut. So to my knowledge, to this day, Don did not get a check for showing up and illegally removing a recording, a public record, from a public building as a public servant, and then walking out. And if you're in the camp that says, "Well, Don wasn't even a public servant. He could take that recording anywhere he wanted." Well, he's done this so many other times as well. And it's against Sunshine laws. It's illegal. You might even say criminal, Don.
Right, so I'm saying that you're gonna need signer added, which would be Carl.
Okay, so... And we're gonna send the mayor and me... Okay, so... So why don't you just make a motion to that effect, just so I heard. Call for a motion to that effect.
Can I make that motion?
I think one of you.
We need a motion.
Make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Second, Carl, the assign. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the forms that I'm going to pass around at the end, at the bottom, the future, you will just sign it for me. On that, we'll be sufficient for the benefits.
You have a pen, that's for the... What's great, the new pens.
There's one more behind that, Zim. One is for seacoast, the one is for capitol.
Okay, now, so this is solely for this purpose here. That's for this guy, for this. Wasn't there something to be signed for the seacoast?
Yeah, it's right there. Yeah, most of them.
Yes, pretty much that's it.
Yeah.
But was there anything additional because of the...
No. Seacoast is our... Holds our CDs. Capital City holds all of our... All of our accounts, the checking accounts, our grants. So that way, you'll be a signer. When the CDs come due, one of us will go. You just recert for it. And then what'll happen is when I take this to Capital City, you will need to go and... They'll have papers to sign, and Zim and I both will have to go again and redo this because the capital city is all and adding to it.
Yeah, fine.
This just saves us... So we can get this done now versus another 30, 40 days and have the meeting.
Yeah, fine.
There is nothing on here about the community center.
Yes. Approving the extra funds for the board grant, broadband grant for the community center. That's right before the resolution adopting the statewide... Yeah. Because we need that in the minutes that we have. What we're gonna do with the extra money.
So this is all about you here.
Thank you.
Okay, we're talking about the... I've spoken to broadband funds and this community center. We've all listened to you and went to... Had a public hearing already. We can vote on accepting the process for the community center and the location. The community center is paid for through the broadband funding. So it's no cost to the town. And it has a... Objective. Supposedly, we do it on Third Street, on the city property here on Third Street. So it's on a paved road. And it's also used as an evacuation center for the town. Supposed to be equipped with a kitchen and enough facilities to house the majority of the people in town if they need to for a storm evacuation. Obviously, it won't be four beds, but I mean, a space to get them out of the storm. We need to have to make a motion to pass this. And maybe a second. Second. Two motions that are all on minutes. That's something this town's needed for a long time.
This is incredible. You remove Russ the Suss, Don the Con, Mary Mary. We have two motions that have passed unanimously. Everybody is agreeing. If this keeps happening, who knows all the good that could happen in Otter Creek?
Place we're going to get it without having to come here with all the argument. That's great. Okay, management agreement, approval, decree of the order. All right, so...
Two hundred and fifty is coming in.
For the water?
Well, each year, the resolution that's on that is every year, the state does a... Each county does a resolution to merge with the emergency management people in Bronson so that in a catastrophe, they're gonna be our main people that will come out to us with support, with the... They'll be our liaison, basically, instead of everybody trying to get Tallahassee, FEMA, all of that. They're gonna be one station, and we're gonna all be sort of tied in together. So they'll be our one leading person to get us what we need in case of an emergency. But the state requires that we do a resolution to say, "Yes, we wanna be part of this group." So before we do this, your resolution along with all of your data to support the resolution and what it entitles as far as the help that Otter Creek will receive and everything else that, you know, that goes along with that part of it. Zim, would you like for me to read the heading of the resolution?
The title.
Yes.
This is a resolution that we need to make a motion on and receive for. Basically, things... It's changing some stuff throughout the state. My understanding is we really have to do nothing different. If there's still an emergency, you still call 911.
Yep. This is in a hurricane. If everything comes down to it and somebody loses their house, you know? It's a flood. But we have... We're gonna pull together as a team to get us the support that we need instead of trying to say, "Okay, now he would've found that." Resolution 24... 2024-1 before the town council. The resolution approving the adoption of the statewide municipal aid agreement relating to interjurisdictional municipal assistance in accordance with the Emergency Management Act, Charter 252, Florida statute. How many question we have?
Seven.
All in favor?
Agreed.
Okay, now, would you sign it?
Good deal. This time, there is an old business to say.
Hold on, you got two more items. Reviewing and approve upgrade on the water meter account software program. This is an exciting new business. And our insurance.
All right, okay. So water meter software can information gives us the ability to do online billing, people pay the bills online and follow through, bringing this into the... At least into this century.
Well, what it's coming down to is we have a software program that we use for our water billing, and it's called UB Maps. Okay, UB Maps is... It is basically on our desktop, but it is managed through the internet. Okay? This software program is like any other upcoming software program. They're going to do away with it in the next eight months. But because we are now trying to go live with our website, we and several people have asked, "When are we going to get the option to pay online?" Okay? This is going to be an upgrade to our current software. We will be leaving the desktop, basically, internet, and going to what is called a cloud base. This cloud base is going to cost us about $800 more a year than what we currently pay it. But there's several benefits to this. The benefits would be your... The option to everybody to go online, pay your bill. In this, you will be able to see your account once you create it through the portal. You'll be able to make your payments. You will be able to review your history. Now, they told me that they're only gonna import a history up to about a year. But anything else, we're trying to work it to where I can get everything that's here from 2015 uploaded so that you can see it all. Yes, and we're trying to find a way to do this. But still, regardless, even if it's just a different add-on to your account, you'll be able to see your history, what you're, you know... But there will be other things that, you know, between that software update. The way this is worded, it says review and approve upgrade on the water meter account. This is only the software, not the water meter.
Correct.
Here, just software only. Yeah, just the software. I gave you in the literature that I gave you, and there is what we have, which is UB Maps and what we're going to get. So there's a lot more items that we're gonna get. This one is also... We can add more programs as we meet us in the future. Like I said, with this being the... Everyone can go out and put your credit card information in and pay. They carry the fiber... I mean, the federal and the state guidelines for cyber security. So we will not have to pick up another part of it on our insurance, which is good because that's less money. So there, we'll treat us as a third party. You will go online. They'll have all the security they're supposed to have, and then it'll close right away. So if you have a question on your bill and there needs to be an adjustment, you'll see it right away. Okay? So... But it's... In order to do this, we're bringing it before the board now. We're our first... It won't actually hit until about July where we'll have to pay. It's gonna be initial $1,000 to start it. But it's a one-time fee, and they'll transfer all of our data from there into the new program. And then from there, at that point, then we'll also be able to take it on the website. But that little button that says, "Make your payment," you know? So it'll take you to their portal, and you'll be able to set up your account that way too. So we can pick it up now, or we can pick it up in about eight months. At some point in time, it is going to come where we're gonna have no choice. But this is one of those that, you know, we're getting a lot of feedback saying, "What are you going to offer that part of paying online?" I suggest we do it now.
Well, if we do it now, we get the credit for the payments.
Yeah, we will get adjusted. For what we have already paid, that is not due again until March and April of next year. We'll get a credit. So what we're gonna put out will also come back. So in the long run, it will be a little bit more money, but it's gonna hit us anyway. You know? But just not now. You know, for what the credit we're gonna get back tomorrow, we're gonna put out, will balance out till we have to assume that extra money. Okay? So if that is something you guys are interested in, you know, I'll get Zim to, as the active mayor, sign the agreement so I can get it over to... To us.
Do we have a motion out for it?
I make a motion. We are all over it.
Sorry.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. And the other thing you asked about meters. I've already spoken with the writer on it about that process of upgrading all of our meters. And if we don't get the generator on this process in the water plant, or if I next go around, we get the generator to upgrade on all the meters and bring everybody's meters to more electronic reading faster and stuff, easier to maintain. And also, we alert when there's a leak or something in your house or your property. If there's a leak, it'll give us an alert if there's a leak. Instead of contacting you. High bills for the reason. Anyway, I just wanted to know that. You just mentioned that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Our last item is our insurance.
We have gotten... They did an assessment of the town. It's like 1.3 million, was it?
At one point, yeah.
And we've been assessed value for so long at 200 and something. Our insurance company is basically throwing it out at us. We gotta do something. We can't keep doing this all the way. Which is bigger. It's a big cost increase as well.
We're going to... We went from $308,000 assessed way back to 1.175 million dollars worth of assets for the town of Otter Creek now. Hurricane season starts in two weeks, okay? Most insurance, if we don't do something soon, they won't pick us up, okay? As your packet shows that our lovely second water plant over here is only assessed at $25,000. The value is 400 and... Yeah. No, it won't. So we... I got with the insurance. Our assets are going to... The premium's gonna go up to 12,000, but it won't hit us until next fiscal year, okay? So we're going to see that come October anyway. Now, it's gonna cost us about $1,900 to go ahead now and add the values that we need to cover for all of our insurance needs before hurricane season hits. But that payment won't hit us... But that payment won't hit us until July. We can go ahead and increase it now to what it's going to be come the new fiscal year, but the difference is going to be $1,900. Okay? But if hurricane season hits us, we are covered. And in that way, it's, you know, regardless whether it's here, the water plants, whatever, we are truly covered on what, to cover what we're supposed to.
We're fortunate that we've been able to avoid anything that's happened north or south of us.
It's like it's a blanket when it gets right up to us and goes away.
Yeah. But because of the, I mean, God bless our coastal towns, but we've been very, very fortunate.
But because of this, this was a, I'd open, I'd just say, hey, it would be, I can't, I'm not going, I can't go forward without your approval to say yes, let's go ahead and increase it. Yes, we know it's going to cost us a little bit more in July for the final payment, but our assets will be covered. So that's why I'm bringing it to you guys.
Well, I will make that motion that week.
Sure.
Do our insurance.
So there's two, a motion, Carl and Laura. I will make the first motion, this is Carl's, the second. And Joseph is an aye, myself is an aye. It's unanimous.
This is incredible. Everybody's on the same page, doing something for the actual residents. I haven't seen anything like this since I moved to Otter Creek.
I'm looking up thinking I might miss something else.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I can...
If you could do it in the future, if you just put a little boy in front of each one, so I'll keep them on check. So at this time, there is no old business for saying. We've got the administration of maintenance, water. We've talked about the administration, biggest issue was the insurance. We talked about the billing already, so that's pretty much a fix here to that. Maintenance-wise, Richard's been up on all the grounds and everything's kept up.
As I say, Richard does a really good job.
And he manages, Richard manages these water systems so well. He's on them every day. He does a great, wonderful job on it. He's right on it. And we do appreciate you, Richard. The water filter system over there, we've got started the installation of it. DEP has just surveyed it up today. We haven't had a chance to talk about this in a while. DEP, when they approved it and said we can go forward with it, they did mandate that we increase the amount over that we originally prepared to do. So the cost factors on the filters were higher than initially thought was going to be for the purchase. So we didn't have the funds for the installation.
What was the difference of it?
About six grand.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, so the labor for the installation was right at 6, five to six grand. So I worked it out with DEP that we, myself, and with the maintenance guy, under the licensed water guide, we were able to install this ourselves, and we have been working on it. We've got some really good progress on it at this time. We've gotten a little to go. I had some health issues that's kind of sent me back and working on it, but I've gotten back in there and started working on it again. And I suspect, you know, about the first of the month, that we'll have it all assembled. And we did save the money in the budget for the electrician to come in to finally fine-tune everything and hook it all up. So that was, that kept us on track and keep on moving forward on the clean water filter systems. So we didn't have to take a setback because of requirements. That was the only answer I had to, because I needed to have the money to do anything different. So that's what's going over the water. We talked about the water meter grant thing on the next go-round. We are still on the current grant. We are still in the process of environmental study. We should be getting that back here probably within a month or so. And that should fall back to Fox, and it'll kick us right on into our next phase, which we are changing, we'll be changing engineering management firms this time, which is, it was their choice. It wasn't by any reason. And so we are in the process of getting that paperwork back to Fox to get a new firm offline, so that when it does come back from the environmental study, we're ready for it and have somebody in line to pick that process up. Of course, there'll be some legal legalities we'll have to go through. We'll probably have to have another meeting and vote on the new firm, just like we did the old firm. So that is forthcoming. Anybody else agree?
No, the website. If you want to go online, you can go ahead and, we are active. I'm in the process of uploading the 23 and 24 agendas, as well as the minute packets. The children's table gate, they're scheduled, so I'll be adding that to it, as well as anything else that I can think of. I want to see if, I'm open for any suggestions on what else you guys would like to see on our website. Do you want to see the ordinances, the resolutions? Just give me an idea of what you would like to see, so that I know what else I can upload.
We probably don't see the ordinances.
Okay, yeah.
For those who don't know, that'd be great.
The web address is townofotter creek.org.
This is a good time to remind everybody that these are real people, real lives. They've got 24 hours in their day, just like you and I do. So they don't need to be contacted. Whether you have great positive feedback for them and ideas, or whether you hate them, it doesn't matter. Please leave them alone to do their normal task. Every time we take away from their opportunity to do their task and their jobs, they get behind. So important, remember, everyone, leave the people of Otter Creek alone! But you can always, always pray for them, and if there's an event, you can come and support them.
And if you want to go on there, like I said, dot org, yes. Like I said, it's, most of it's, you can go online. Within the next week, then you'll be able to see certain things, as I'm now posting them, getting the most current, up-to-date stuff. Shoot me an email if you think of anything else. I mean, because this website is for you guys.
Birthday, we could do people's birthdays.
Yeah, that's on, we don't have a community event calendar, just like you know for that. So, you know, you just, I'm open for any suggestions, you know. Anything that you guys want to see, let me know.
It would even be nice to upload that weather rain that we have back there that was connected from the EFC. If we could put that on there.
Okay.
Which is, is that through the weather?
It's, you'd have to talk to Dr. Don.
Alright, I mean, is it part of the weather app that we see now that we can get? Because now they do have an app for Otter Creek, now for the app. So if they can get to the website, they'll look at it more clearly.
You guys just, you know, I'd love to hear your suggestions.
Were you referring to the one from the emergency management?
No, I don't have that one.
Download this. It's through, it's from the EFC. It gives us all our weather alerts.
Oh, cool, okay.
So you get the EFC?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good deal. Okay, just one more.
Can I make one comment before we end? Just wanted to welcome the new council members, and to say that I know some of you are new, some of you are not new, but if there's any interest in sunshine laws, ethics, parliamentary procedure, any of that stuff, I'm happy to do a workshop or send a PowerPoint that I have, whatever's helpful to you guys. Just let me know.
There is an ethics training coming up. It's in August.
August, yes. It's going to be at 5:30 in Cross City, or 5 o'clock.
The apartment house again?
I'm not sure. I'll remember to let you guys know. And then there is going to be a webinar for the sunshine ethics part next month. If you're interested, I'll send you the link where you can register, or you can come in here, and we can set it up and we can all watch it. Because each of us, that's something that we still have to do as well. The one we're going to go to, Cross City Board, is for, you know, taking, that's a different part of the ethics, not so much as the public record part of it. So it'll be good for all of us.
I keep forgetting to mention it. I propose that we do a festival here in town, at the same time that Cedar Key does their festival, so we can rob some of their traffic out here. Do a street festival here on Third Street. Sexes are easy to close off to do it. And proceed to do that for this fall, which is, it's in October, I believe it is.
I think trying to get vendors for that, that would be difficult.
We got to put it out there somehow to get it out and to reach out to the ones who can.
I know a guy who knows people who will show up.
Okay, we're looking, obviously, I'm hoping to set up some PowerPoints on the back of my property there, so we do get food vendors that can actually plug in out there for the food service vendors. Obviously, there are tent vendors with new power, it'll be a daytime venue. We have to decide if it will be a one-day or a two-day event. The church, I've already spoke with them already about it, if we close that street there. They're okay as long as we're closing out of the way before they get their service Sunday night, which is, I think, 5 o'clock, I think, which most festivals wrap up on Sunday by 12, 12, 12 to 1:00. Yes, sir.
Is there going to be a vendor fee?
At this point in time, we're, this is the first conversation we've had. There should be something, but it has to be a, if we did do a fee, it would have to be a refundable fee if the participation wasn't there to support it.
I understand.
Yeah, that way it makes it fair for all the vendors that are here. Because it's the first time, one, it would be risky for someone to come and invest their time and their efforts. So that give them a way out when it doesn't turn profitable if you don't.
But if you make it free, then people are going to move from down there up here?
Truthfully, the first year, I'm all about it being free, for the vendors, just to get the participation and get the activity. And then we can actually see and have some experience with it, and we can look at it and assess things for the following year. Actually, Cedar Key does it twice a year. They do it spring.
Specifically, Art's one and the ELC's.
Yeah, so I mean, eh, my heart, like, we can do a railroad one, and we can do a following. This is a historical railroad line, I figure. It's a lot of history with that. So that's, well, I propose that we focus on this and see if we can make it work. I think the free idea, we can get that advertisement, that's going to ring with a lot of vendors. Hey, let's give it a try on that. I think I'll have four, I should be able to have four PowerPoints for food vendors over there. Anyway, this one, it should be meant to be talked about in the night. If everybody's in favor of that, we'll pursue on in the future.
We can always pursue that in the next meeting as well with more information.
Yeah, well the...
Yeah, I'll have to table that and wait till the next meeting so we can look it up more.
Yeah, okay. We'll table that. The next meeting, we'll bring that up, see if it can get work. Good deal. Anybody else got anything to do, councilman? You good? Let's go to public comments. We've got, just a second. Anybody had any comments in public?
I apologize for my outburst in the beginning. Secondary, congratulations, all the new council members. The planet literally cares about this town, and I do too. And by all means, every single one of you, Laura included, Joe, I don't know you yet, Carl, Sim, you have my number, if you need anything, just let me know. If you want to promote a festival, I promise you, the planet will show up. They care about this place, and so if there is a need, I'll do anything I can to try and help the town and the residents as well. Just communicate with me, if you would, please.
We appreciate that.
I'd like to make a comment. Yeah, I represent outside investment interest, because even before any of this was public, during the hurricane, I came up and I did some relief work and some taxing for people out here in Cedar Key, just because I was new to the state. I felt it my civic responsibility, because they were suffering. And being in, from Tarpon Springs, I was actually able to get to them, because many people weren't, because this corridor was primarily open. And so during that, I looked at this area and I did some research, and it intrigued me. Then I did some other research, and I found out about the water and some things like that, and other civic troubles that they were having. Then I noticed all of this, just by third party, not even looking for it or anything, and noticed that there was going through some civic change here, right? Which is encouraging, because there's, like I said, not only people from the, that are newly exposed to this, people have been looking at this area without being exposed to this information. I was, you know? And then unfortunately, I helped, I backed off when I started to discover the civic turmoil that was going on here. As far as I made some inquiries about zoning and things like that, you know, if it was possible to get a commercial residential or anything like that. None of those answers were forthcoming at all, so I backed off, you know? But now, I see that there is going to be some progress, people with progress in mind, you know? I think those opportunities are going to start to open, you know? I would like to be one of those people, because I got about a decade left of activity in me, you know, before I'm ready to just sit down, you know? I would like to do that somewhere where there's some growth and newness and revival. That's my life has always been, in urban rejuvenation and rehabilitation. Started when I was living in Sonoma County. We have floods there. Lived through five major floods, completely wiped out. Lived through five major hurricanes, completely wiped out. So I know about coming back from disaster, you know? I'd like to, if I can, volunteer any way I can. And also, I am interested in joining this community, you know? As it progresses, as it advances. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We would certainly welcome you. Anybody else? Alright, if somebody asks anything, I guess we all have a vote, Jim? Everybody all for Jim?
I'll make an actually a chance. I haven't had dinner yet.
Thank you all for coming in. Well, yeah, y'all got to sign this up. We're going to sign something, you said.
Where'd you go today?
Get these pants.
Tube Town.
Tube Town, baby. Population, one.